One more verse from Matthew's Gospel, chapter twenty-four.
Evda azai impal mati chovi shudhyan.
Inpolayvyan nagoye koth karayegi mateyos.
Let us read verse forty-six altogether.
Hami chalis padlae sabhi jana miler purnesow.
Inpolayegad koth kavasaav funriyavaraalam.
Matthew twenty-four and verse forty-six.
Mati chovi shkot chalis pad.
Number cheyos apusav savunriyav.
Blessed is the God of the Lord, whom is God.
Kamali pani kamyaan da kafesh.
Shall find so doing. Let us pray for God's help.
Hami purneshu kushaayatak nindu praktaagari.
Dvayen bitag jiyar.
O gracious and lovingly Father, thank you Lord for different places from far and near, different languages. Lord, though we belong to different places and languages but you sought us and saved us, brought us into the body of the Lord Jesus Christ, one family. You are our Father, we are our children. Loving Father, thank thee for this blessed fellowship which you have granted unto us these days. At so long shall I have worshiped. Lord, and speak to us when we are meditating thy word. Lord, and nothing may be, Lord leakage and damage may be there and everything for our benefit, we may get our full portion. Help out your brothers also to translate and also to give thy word. Lord, give thy heavenly utterance and equally anointing. We are claiming from your presence, binding the powers of darkness and seeking the victory over the enemies. Activities, loving Father, help us, Lord, focus on upon the word of God and speak to us. We ask this prayer with thanks to the Jesus Christ, precious name we pray. Yami amayam. It is very difficult to spend time after having a good lunch.
Khara khaisake pachhi nikay muskil hunsay yasamay bithaunak laagi.
Thaunonge jinjarva, harin bagilajepan baam.
So the Lord visited Abraham in the heat of the day.
Purneshu le abraham lai diusukho ghammache and visit kano bhai kathio.
In the heat of the day.
Abraham ula.
Midday.
Diusuk madhyadinma.
Hadasigaba namshibha.
That's what we can find in Genesis.
Tiukura sa hami utpatima phonsow.
Ilavalyo ekene ekjin haga Genesis.
Abraham, he ran to receive them and to give hospitality there.
Ani abraham dawdeera gora uniyara shakkar karnak nimti balae.
Abraham ulamaraya bannu sebe yekki.
Many, many things he has prepared.
Dharey kura.
With the help of Sarah.
Unarle, abraham le dharey udakura haru tayar garayega they sarakusayatali.
Ula, abraham ula prikhreeshu buh giteyara dada diyara binkasara.
And three angels, they had very good meal.
Ani tinjana swarga du tharle asal khana khaye.
Bhakita ki lai orke angir ki labam bichag baha.
But after eating food.
Tera khana khaisake pachiche.
Harin ladibamja.
Abraham is standing and waiting in the presence of God.
Subscribe to my channel. Purneshu kupastitima abraham se girea parki reyegathie.
U abraham uyengah mahjumublay.
So he would have gone and taken rest for some time.
Uni gora keh samay kulaagi aaram karnasakte.
Harin karta ula banekta banik aaram.
But he was waiting.
Tera u parki reyegathio.
Haray udan apsa.
The Lord seen the heart of Abraham.
Ani ab, purneshu le abraham ko vidhaila deknu vaya.
Ublayu iye kamaal singe jung abraham.
And the Lord, Lord began to speak to Abraham.
Ani tes pachhi purneshu abraham sanga bad karna suruganu vaya.
Harinaita ublayu asamun krimbar abraham.
And he has given a blessed promise to him, that I will give you a seed.
Ani abraham lai purneshu le evra aasis dinu hay kathio kimati milaya bangsodine shu.
Ublayu la ong abraham anagijer ko banaayu kujembe.
See, unless if Abraham not waited in the presence of God after having lunch, he would not have received the promise of God.
Khana khaisake pachhi abraham le isari parki narayegohay dekhi. Sayad abraham le yo asal pratigya paunithiye.
Haray kane harin, abraham hadam apraye ublay, harin kolaade baam, jamlar banyo avatali jinkadu.
Similarly, we are also after lunch, we are waiting in the presence of God.
Isse prakane hami rupani yas diusukho khana khaisake pachhi purneshu lai parki reyegasow.
Gyer kumjo, harin ladibamja, inakap yutray.
Whatever the lofty purposes of God for our lives and definitely God will fulfill.
Ani hamro jyon konimti purneshu ko tiu ucha udeshiya kesho, tiu se purneshu hamro jyon pura karnuncha.
Ha ublay unpallle ekke 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 jinkranjoo una brenge bintajgi.
Whenever the children of God are gathering together in the presence of God and God is speaking to them.
Jaba pani purneshu ko logharu purneshu kupastitima isari bela hunsan, purneshu rumersanga bad kardasan.
Aba ikun jung ublay, abaki apnatau jungka kam jung ublay, te ublay ukrain baki.
In other words, we can say that God is having plenty of time to speak to his children.
Alko sabdama purneshu leje prasastu samay, afno logar sanga bad karnala dinuncha.
Ban ong te ublay ubu shbun bha ka por ban krain baki.
But many times we are missing his words.
Tera dharey samay chey, hamile ney uwa ko sabdhar lai umkai puthaansow.
Baribun siipad ni, niya kretno kansi pichangati.
Yes, in the voice of God's, we are hearing so many other voices.
Purneshu ko awas sunnako shato, hami al dharey asta awas haro suni rey khauncha.
Haray shob, insaap yaktin unray, bun singe isap yaktin.
Especially we will waste our time to hear air tell.
Vises gharikana, hamile afno samay chey, yo katha haru sunnama.
Air tell, air tell, air tell, voda phone. Air tell. Mobile, mobile company, air tell.
Mobile ka kurara, hamisunnama, hamisamay barwad karsow.
Ani pillunno yega por banasap yaktin.
We'll always love to hear air tell.
Hami zaila pani yeh air tell sunnakalagi chey, hami lalaituncha.
Gilonkeba eyasap yaktin.
Even others still also will listen.
Ani aror yesta tell haru pani hamisunna manparausow.
Bhakshibul kumta ki tell giron keban ismobaamna.
Many times air tell is there, others tell is there, but no God's tell in our lives.
Dharey sabai air tell hamro jyon mauncha, aror tell hamro jyon mauncha, tera purneshu ko tell se hamro jyon mauchay.
Ha air tell giron, bhakita shibun ki tell giron hunray, bun singe kataka tell jung ublay kamaan hangi.
A believer of the Lord like Abraham, he should long to have fellowship and also to listen to God in the presence of God.
Ani abraham justu viswashiya chey, purneshu ko upastitima, purneshu ko sangeeti dwara, purneshu ko awas sunnakalinti tayarunchan.
Thuma abram pad, niye van sway, van roy, masap yaktin bijam utray.
So control your sleep and be alert what God is speaking and you can take full portion.
Ani afno nindra harma tapaila niantan raknos, ani purneshu ko bachan bado tapaila zun, bhag rakdinu hay kesho, ti sunnak nimti tamai tayaranos.
Kai kaba pilasamthia, kontrol yaka, banio masap yaktin bijam utray.
We have meditated upon the time which has been said in Psalm thirty-two, verse six.
Bhanan bhatiis ko chama, bataiyee ko jun samay ko visheema hamile manan gari reyegathio.
Haray kasaam life war, inetporila asap yekasiche.
For this shall everyone that is godly pray unto thee in a time when thou mayst be found.
Is karan haray dhakta le tapaila bhetao nasakini samay hudey tapaisanga prakna goros.
Bhakita, kitray ki namah dekhi, namahar bhatta uwey baro, banme shisha panhaap, manskat yeh oh.
What this good time he is telling about, speaking about the New Testament believer.
Yo samay bhane sabdalise, naya niyam ka viswashiya ro ko visheema ke bethauna khuzi reyegus.
Hanegasasame ko tumayjanki prabangay, thakne ka por key chui vikprabangay.
We have already seen and several important effects upon a believer about the coming of the Lord.
Hamile herisa kesa, ki purne ishwar krishko, awai ko, saak pravaa horu viswashiya jyonma.
Angela i, bayaka jinkhotja utray, kumno ha kajing para hakajing sap jadi prabangay, nilayosyo.
Always and we should be alert to hear this voice of God that behold, I am coming quickly.
Ani hami chey, haray samay satar karna persa, purneshu ko yo awas sunnalaay ki hera muthane ayreegus.
Niye van roy, van alert yala de, masap yata kijung trai, ho ong banan one roy.
Upon such people and the effect of the Lord's coming will be there.
Ani yes chey, vekti ru mathi chey, purneshu ko awai ko ti pravaa dikhaparse.
Bhakumya kita ki bryu, kataka jingwan yu utray kapan baau.
First of all, purity we have seen.
Sabanna paila sudtha.
Nekabar onkong taum dey kajinkhoi.
Secondly, it stands forth our faith, waiting for the coming of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Ani dosro chey, espeharu viswashiya dhir banauso, purneshu ko awaile perkiranak nimti.
Bhakemahar, bhakalong, ban yeng scan, ban ban apriyega jingwan jumtrai.
Thirdly, it will give us passion for soul meaning.
Ani tesro chey, esle ham, hamile atmar jitnakalagi zun hamro vidhaima prim diuncha.
Abpeli yekata kajinkran, ban kumno ban peli mekamaal singe.
Fourthly, it is just pain and sufferings which we are facing in this world.
Ani chautro chey, yo sansaar ma hamile jali reyka dukha, anisankashtu badda, hamile alikuti aaram diuncha.
Bhakata ka basav, bhakalong, kumno ha kane kasi jokajing jinjar, banila ban iye scan.
Fifthly, it oils the veins of obedience.
Ani panchauncha, esle hamro zunchey agya palan karne zunche hamrama chamtahauncha, tesma esle azai thap kewa diuncha.
Bhakavasan kattao kundo, yakata ka ban yengey, yaka ekke ekke kavakikrin, rong yakato ban yel scan.
Sixthly, this will guard us from the temptations which we are facing in this world.
Ani chaidhuncha, hamile yasansar ma huda peri, jati ni pariksha huncha, tya vada zhogi naknimti sayadapriyanso.
Abhenriyoma kerae gi, ba kumno ginlak na kai kei kamaal jamtendation.
Seventhly, we have seen that this coming of the Lord will fill us with a great hope. Christ in us is the hope of our glory.
Ani satuncha, purneshu ko, ishvar krishko, awai ko zunche asa cha, krishhami vitra mayma ko asa.
So we have learned from.
Abhindiya bhakalong, abhingi apya kata, kajing vikka jingwan jumtrai.
We can see another effect of coming of the Lord upon a believer.
Ani alko pravaa pani, ishvar krishko, awai, viswashiya ko jyon mathi hami deknusakso.
Bhakata kwayru, kajingwan yu utray, kajingdiya haray, ban yiri bakadam one.
Matthew's Gospel, chapter twenty-four, verse forty-six, we there.
Ani forty-six. Mati chovi shudhay ko chalis pad, hamile herekathio.
Forty-six.
Apusav kavasaav funriyav, ney inakpoy na mateyos.
Let us read once again this verse altogether please.
Hami feripani yosoi jana miler purnesow.
Tulay langi binyeboro.
Kindly open your Bibles.
Sabhai ko Bible or like honos.
Thuma puleyaka Bible jungfi.
In your own language, read loudly.
Tapai ko afno basama tapali jorle purnos.
Halakakjin, sapure jam yeka.
So that your sleep will go and others' sleep also will go.
Ki tapai ko nindra se bhagos, ani oru ko nindra arun bhagay.
Bhakaji samthia, jungfi kallegno, bhakita yebayat samthia langro.
You read loudly, others will not sleep.
Tapaila jorle pundu vaya, oru orsutne sainen.
Harabipole jam kivayro kilam samthia.
Let us read twenty-fourth chapter of Matthew's Gospel, verse forty-six.
Mati chovi shudhay ko chalis pad, hamisamay miler porsa.
Mateyos apusav savunriyav.
Blessed is the servant, whom is God. Malik nishan, kuyas, kisliyav. So this is speaking about the service of the Lord, working for the Lord.
Esle chey, purneshu ko shiva gari reyko, purneshu ko nimti kam gari reyko, vishelaba khaanso.
In fact, yes.
Hanegaba jay, yaka kamtey kumtrai, batiyaka service kajung trai.
Psalm thirty-two, verse six, he is telling about the prayer.
Bhatiis bhanan sakra, chapa dlesay, praktnak visheema batai reyegus.
But Psalms of life, life war key chui sapanga jinduwaay. This prayer also is the service to the Lord.
Ani yo praktna pani, purneshu ko shiva nahi ho.
Kajingduwaay kadeyegi jisakriyav utray.
See, you can find that in Acts, chapter thirteen.
Ani yushey, hami preli thiero adheyama phonsow.
Ani ilaa, ban yu akram apustal khalai.
Verse two verses, let us read altogether please.
Duhi, pailo duhi pad, hami purnesow.
Bahar nyapu elam.
Acts thirteen, one and two, all together.
Ek, preli thiero, ekru duhi, hamisamay jana miler purnesow.
Apostol khalai, may banar nyapu elam.
Now they were.
Abba intaasam, bhai, komen.
Before the death.
Beshetan ta, chichetan ta, chichetan ta, chichetan ta, bhandabas, nigar, esmo, pure, niwasi, kisyes, asat, thain, karan, herat, chobhurka, kamanen, saw, tinale, pravu, ko, shiva, kari, reyka, rav, minister, gelama, kuyat, raat, kari, bannu, vaya, gharan, nimti, bannu, vaya, shalay, sre, is, kam, karan, alak, para, tiskalay, mekini, alay, bola, e.
The second verse we can see, as the minister to the Lord and fasted.
Yani ra dustru padma, tinale pravu ko shiva gari reyka, rav puas, basi reyka, gelama.
Haranegaba arnila, ban ki, badiyakshakriyav utray, ban kisham, yaka fasted.
This prayer not only for forgiveness.
Yo praktnase, hamro chhama kulaagi matruhui.
Haray kajingduwaay, ney tanaminta kajingma.
Through prayer, we can serve the Lord.
Tera praktna dwara chey, hami purneshu ko shiva karnasakso.
Haray daka, jinduwaay ilaa, bansekriyav utray.
A prayerful man is the real servant, to the Lord.
Praktna gharne vekti chey, saache purneshu ko shiva kum bandhasa.
Unam, unam duwaay, ure, usakriyav, ubhajung trai.
Without prayer, nothing will happen in this world from the Lord.
Purneshu pati vada yasansar ma, praktna, bina, ki pani huna sakdena.
Anaya pratey, kandbe jinduwaay, karmrong, kai kei kei ro.
I fully believe that Sharanos of worship, church prayed for these meetings, since long they are praying.
Maray pura viswasa, ki saran praktna ghon ka viswashiya le, yo shiva ko lagi, wale dharey praktna garayegathie.
Angesken, bhakane kishan, paramay jomkesharon, kiladuwaay, banbo yaganega special meeting.
Many prayers are behind these meetings.
Yo shiva ko pachadi, dharey praktnaru, varayegathichan.
Shibunma, giron ki jinduwaay, navanta ki ney ki, ki ney ki meeting.
Our God is a prayer hearing and prayer answering God.
Hamro purneshu chey, praktna sunnu ne, ani praktnak utta dinu ne, purneshu nuuncha.
Tera aji ngi udey, ubasap yega jinduwaay, baruwa ayega juba kandaga jinduwaay.
Today we are entering into the answers of prayers of Sharanos of worship.
Asse chey, hamile saran mandali le garayko, praktna, vitra, hami praves garayegasow.
Madaaski, apojyakane kasharan, gindrum yaka kata kajingduwaay, jungki.
Without prayer, God will not act.
Purneshu leje praktna bina kam karnu huna.
Friend kajingduwaay, ublay ukrain karmre.
There are people, there are people doing God's work without prayer.
Tya ni ra manchiru san, jasle chey, praktna bina purneshu ko kam karnasanso.
Bun ki bryu, ki, bun ki bryu, giron ki bha, khenle, khen duwaay, kyleyegakam yu utray.
Ultimately, this value for them.
Ani antama gora chey, unarle asapal banna persa.
Harabakadu, kilong ki bam, saiso re.
No, we cannot serve the Lord in with our own strength and with our own wisdom.
Hami afno buddhi dwara, afno shakti dwara, purneshu ko shiva garna, padavi sakdena.
We, we jisata jingi, ban we jing, ka, boj jingi, gamlar bansekriyav utray.
And not by mights, not by power, but by the spirit of God, everything will happen in this world.
Bolle hui na, shaktile hui na, per purneshu ko atma le, yu priti ma, sabkuro karnasakuncha.
Unde yega por, unde yega ji klanjigi, ban nere yega kamaal singe.
Person who is praying, he is serving the Lord.
Jo vektili praktna gari reyeguncha, usle purneshu ko shiva gari reyeguncha.
Vitaki bha, vitaki bryu ki bha, duwaay ki sakriyav utray.
There are many people who are not born again.
Ya dharey manchiru san, jasle nayjano payaka sainen.
Shibunma ki bryu, giron ki bha, paniyo, yegi pani.
If you pray for them, if they born again, there is a result of your prayer.
Tabai le unarli, praktna karnu vaya, ani unarle udhar mutti paye vani dekhi, yu chey tabai ko praktnak uttaro.
Hara, fidi vay, ki yo, yaka kata kajingpe ney, kadey kaka juba kandaga jinduwaay jungfi.
For example, my elder brother is not born again and my mother prayed till her death for his salvation.
Udharanku nimti, meru jettu daazu, le nayjano paye ko thena, ani meri amale, mar anta summa, meru jekha daazu ko nimti praktnagaray rey.
Bhakana ayutsa, kumman jinga bha, haru kajingyak jangka kumeye jangna, kadu, kaduwaay navanta jang, oh.
Till her death, he has not born again.
Ani wa le, mrityu, wa ko mrityu aysima, wa le nayjano paynu vay ko thena.
Haru kajingyak jangi, utaon mejanga omyo, are bajing pe ney.
After death of my mother's, after several years, the Lord dealt with him.
Ani meri amakho, mrityu passa, dharey vorsa pachichey, purneshu le, wa sanga bewaar karnu vaya.
Hunray, harin, kajingyak jangi mejanga, harin, bun snempad, ho play, ulapentreka, bajingim jangi.
I can say boldly, this prayer of my mother, that he was born again.
Ani mo, nifakasama, yo hanna sakso, ki, purneshu le, meri amakho, praktnak utta ma, yo kam karnu vay ko.
Nala ban ong thikna aba, daga jingduwaay jangi mejanga, bauta utraya valla ekka kamba.
Waking up early in the morning, three o'clock, she used to go top of the house with weeping tears, she used to pray for my brother.
Bihane, tinbasi uthera, mathi kalsiba gora, meri amale, aasusui, hoodai praktnagarni gatin.
Ki mejanga life chey, ekhi le, halor, ban ki, vay, kajungmat, navanta janggo.
Lord, save him.
Purneshu, uwa lai bachaunhos.
Trai, tope timyayi.
Lord, give him salvation.
Purneshu, uwa lai udhar dinos.
Trai, tope timyayi.
This is the service of the Lord.
Yushe purneshu ko shiva.
Hanegaba jikki sakriyav utray.
That service saves one person.
Ani yehi shiva leje hazarjana, bacheka, bakane kajing sakri, ki pendi hem shi hazarmut.
He is the minister to the Lord and fasted.
Ani yahan sey, uniyarle, purneshu ko shiva gari rey, upas sey.
Ban hamne ki, sakriyav utra, ban kisham fasted.
They are not doing anything here, but they are praying over here.
Unyarle yaka gari reyegasainan, tera praktna matre gari reyegasan.
Hamne kimey rey, hemre kiyaduwaay.
God answered the prayer and he opened the heaven and they heard a voice from the Holy Spirit and suffered Paul and Barnabas for the work which I have chosen.
Ani purneshu le, akas khun vaya, ani purneshu ko awasunyaka aay, ki sawar parabas lai, yo kamko nimti, meru nimti alak dera.
Ba, kilap, kapriyaka jingkam sejana, jinduwaay, yekki, barya sarar parabas, kilap, kapriyekki, yaka kata jinduwaay.
Without this prayer and waiting upon the Lord and there would not be any revival through Paul and Barnabas.
Ani yo praktna, bina, ti upas, bina, paol, ani barnabasle, jati pani jagriti liyay, ki sambautiye na.
Kala kamla arman long, kane, raamran kajingduwaay, karkasing, ha jing jung, parabas, par bol.
Today, God, the Lord is giving us call that we should become prayerful people.
Ani purneshu le awan gari nuvay ko cha, aja podin, ki hami praktnagarne vekti ru bani napursa.
Utray, mtaudan khoti ni, banin long, kita ki bha duwaay.
Not only for our forgiveness.
Hamro chhama ko nimti matruhui na.
Unde naminta kajingma, yengi.
But for the work of the Lord, power of God should be descended from him.
Tera purneshu ko shivaay ko lagi, purneshu ko samalche, mathi swarga vada orli napursa.
Navanta ka kam kajung utray, navanta kareyegata ban, prir kai kei baronado.
The Lord sought us and saved us, brought us into the body of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Purneshu le, hamile khoseyra, hamile wa ko, dihemma, lenu vayko sa.
Ublayu la va thi, balavana, haka do jung trai.
He is the head of that body.
Ani wa chey, yo sarir ko sirhununcha.
Maou long, takli jangka mej jangi.
Every thought will come from him only.
Ani sabai, pratek vicharche, wa bata matreyao sa.
Baro ki ji parkachi ki kovan na hu.
The Lord himself is organizing the church.
Purneshu swayam, apoyle ney, yo mandali ko chitren gari reyegayko sa.
Baro ki ney key key, utray, dharay, ukaay, balam.
He is organizing the church and he is looking after the edification of the church through the members who are in the body of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Wa le ney mandali ko hercha gari reyegos, ani mandalima vayka, jati pani, abwarsan, uniy dwara, mandalima kam vayreegasan.
Vayu la awan ra, yekki pannro, dagai, rekine kibra bangey, baro, kaba katalam.
So that means the Lord has distributed, allotted some work to every believer in the body of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Ani pravisukrisko, dema, pratek viswashiilaay, wa le gharnu parne, kam chutaiyekho, ani diyekho cha.
Ya baro ki prabangay, utray, la po ka bhak, bakin, sakriyav utray.
Though it is a one body, one church, but many members we are.
Evta de, evda mandali, tera dharey angaro.
Ralangilong kaway ka met, kaway ka, clearre, giron parki dhuan, naki jangkevay.
Similarly, though we are many members, but body is one.
Dharey.
Church is one.
Saagaran basama, dharey, evta upadi, evta sarir vayta, pani, dharey angaro.
Salam, onga kapa shay, bakalangilong, shibunki body, hanre yede kaway.
Every member in the body is working for the edification of the body.
Ani pratek angale chey, mandali ko unnatik nimti kam gari reyeguncha.
Bhakvaro ka, ney ka, body jangi, katreka, mragata, jingha, janka, janka, balam.
That means the Lord Jesus Christ, he only distributed what we have loo.
Ani.
He has allotted and distributed.
Ani wa le ne tharunu vaya, ani wa le ne baanu vayko sa, ki hamile kun kam karnu persa, vanero pravisukris swayamle.
Maou hi, lalay yega kam yengi, ban kano kano, kambang, baninle, maou hi batayegi.
How he has appointed and distributed through the blessed Holy Spirit.
Wa le kusari chey, tharunu vayko sa, aniu kam baanu vayko sa, poidra atma dwara.
Nekam, sibka, kui, kumno la po, ba kumno la, la, biyaegi, banle yega kam janggo.
We can find in the Gospel that a master has given talents to the servants and he has gone to the foreign country.
Hami susamuncha, na paynu sakso, ki kusari malikle, noukar harai, eh thoda diyera, uni taada kesma gaye.
Nilavani yega Gospel, bautray, la ayega talent, bawa lecha, kasnon kajingay.
He told to them, and I will come again, we do business he told.
Ani wa le, tinale, baney, ki mopeni parke naansu, timel espadu, biosai gara.
Dola ong yekki, ban gilla yeta ka kam, but, hey, yala yegane kavistajungfi.
The day has come and the master returned and he is asking account from his servants.
Ani samay aay reyegus, ki, malik parkinuncha, ani pratek badda vayle tiu, lekhalinuncha.
Barakasavankapor, bautray, one fight, panshinga ji kenne ki.
Some servants, they are working very hard for the master's task.
Ani malikle diyekho, kamko nimti chey, dekhati udha, noukar halay, merat gari kana, pachor taasat, kam gari reyegasan.
Kumbakavta, utray, la ayega kam, pitaki sakri, kilatre, kilatre shittam.
Usas people, he told, well done, my good servant.
Yes cha.
Good and faithful servant.
Yes cha vektiya leche, wa le banuncha, dhanya, ani meru viswashiya dhas.
Ha ya kum kita ki bryu, yo suki bapi, ki, baki brye, ki, ki sakriyav, yaka beshania.
Brother seventy, told, slothful servant.
Ani alko, daschle jwale banuncha, alche.
Foolish and slothful servant.
Ya vay, murka, ani alche, das.
Ya ku vay, ya, ya kita ku vay, barong, pi bajaito, bajaito, barubam, shania, shakri.
Psalm twenty-four and verse forty-six, he is speaking about our responsibility of the duty or the work which the Lord has presented to us to do and we should do faithfully in the local church.
Chovi shudhay ko, chappan padma chey, wa le hamna dinu vayko, zunchey, kamcha, tiu kamcha, stanya mandalima, gari reyekvi shobataanso.
Akabar, gusav, kabatay, hamne, bakadno ka kam ka banle, akor, jangka balam.
Again, here in verse forty-six, we can see, blessed is the servant.
Ani chalis padma, jukul la, hamile deknusakso, tiu das, dhanya ho.
Akabasav funriyav, bhaong, basuk utaushakri.
Whom his Lord, when he comes, shall find so doing.
Just like thiska, malikle, uniy odha, testai gari reyko, vedavnison.
Navaha ka por, ba u, one, uklay, kunto, yuxam yekki.
We were born again and baptized, they baptized in the body of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Hamile, hamile nayjano payo, ani pravisukrisko dema, hamile baptisma leo.
Nilay, yo, bajing pe ney, banhaka, mejyav utray, ngasim baptisma.
There is no unexplained brain problem in the body, in the church of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Ani tya ni ra, kunai pani, berasgariko samasya, purneshu ko, pravisukrisko, dema sainen.
Ha, te, hamta, kamdron, kano kano, ka kam, kavantre, yaka do, yu utray.
For everybody, he has given work.
Pratek ko lagi, wa le kam dinu vayko sa.
Ya baro, ayega kam.
Faithful is the servant who is doing.
Ani viswashiya ki, tiu dhaso, jasle yo kam gari reyegus.
Shania utaushakri, bha, bha, yehi la, yega kam.
So we should be faithful and faithful servants.
Hami chey, viswashiya ki, dasru banna persa.
Niye banlong, ki sakriy ki beshania.
See, the Lord used in the Bible, prayerful people, I already told.
Yo Bible ma chey, praktnagarni vekti ru, hami paudusow.
Hanegaba, ublay, uptreka, my kita ki bha duwaay, ki sakri.
Abraham, God used because he is a prayerful man.
Purneshu le abraham. Purneshu le abraham la chalau vaya, karan, uni praktnagarni vekti chey.
Ublay, uptreka, my bar, abraham, number one, abraham, ulong, bajut duwaay.
With three hundred men.
Tinsey jana vekti ru liyera.
Balaispa, murt kita ki bryu.
He went to war with several kings and kingdoms.
Dhere, Rajyeru, Andi, Rajharu, Sanga, Ladae, Gharana, Unii, Niskay.
Ula Le, Manli, Yarathma, Bachi Bolki, Se.
By doing that, and the Lord judged those Gentile nations.
And Yeso, Karire Sei, Permesurli, Ki Any Jati, Rajhar Ko, Nyai, Karre.
Bar Blay, Ula, Vishar, Yekki Ta Ki, Gentile.
So the Lord used Nehemia.
And Permesurli, Nehemia La, Chalunu Hau.
Ublay, La, Uptre Kam, Ya, Nehemia.
Wherever God's house is fallen.
Janira, Permesur Ko Ghart, Halai Kocha.
Aba, Karyinka, Jom Utrae, Ka Habno.
And the separation wall has been broken.
And Ki, Alak Gharni, Junse, Parxalcha, Tio, Bhatkietocha.
Dakia, Pani, Akvat, Utaki Wall, Kalak, Pajno.
And gates have been burned with fire.
And Faat, Garu Sei, Agol Le, Nastu, Baykocha.
Bah, Ke Gate, La, Thamno, De, De Ding.
There is no spiritual activity in the house of God.
And Tianir, Kunai, Atmiki, Kamruh, Bayre, Ki Saina, Permesur Ko, Hau, Ma.
Hakamto, Hai, Kamron, De, Kano, Kano, Ka Kam, Ka Kam, Ki Utrae.
We see Nehemia, chapter one.
Nehemia, Ek, Dihe Ma.
And Nehemia, Number Way.
He seated, and with tears and fasting, he prayed before the Lord.
Hami, Dechnu, Ki U, Basero, Permesur Ko, Agadi, Upasunusle, Pratna Karirre, Ko.
Yee, Bah, Usho, Hato, Badak, Bakij Dhuwa, Bah, Fasting.
God used Moses.
Permesurli, Musala, Chalunu Hau.
Ublay, La, Uptre Kam, Ya, Moses.
Moses also is a man of prayer.
And Musa, Pani, Pratna Gharne Vektitiye.
Moses, Ude, Upre, Upaduwa.
God told him, destroy these people and make you a great nation.
And Permesurli, Vannu Hae Ko, Tio, Mahui, Yo, Jati Lae, Nastu, Karne Chu, Andi, Timi, Waade, Waala, Jati, Upan, Karne Chu.
Ublay, Ka, Mapin, Pan, Napin, Dapno, Yekine, Napin, Nuta, Yenge Ki, Bre, Barname, Snabing, No Way, Upa, Ta, Dhuwa.
But Moses prayed, and the wrath of God has been quenched.
Musa Le, Pratna Karre, Andi, Permesur Ko, Khrotla, Shantega Re.
Moses, Ula, Dhuwa, E, Bakajingdam, Kajingbita, Jang, Ublay, Ka, Jeno.
David is a prayerful man.
Daut, Pani, Pratna Gharne Vektitiye.
David, Ude, Upre, Upaduwa.
David recovered all because of his prayer life.
Daute, Shobto, Pirta, Pae, Usko, Pratna, Kunno, Jiunle.
Dakajin Dhuwa, Jung David, Ula, Yo, Pyang, Pakchaneen.
David is a man of faith.
Daute Sei, Vishwashi, Vishwashle, Bhare, Ki Manchitiye.
Ude, David, Ude, Upadak, Bakijingit, Suda.
He got victory over Gulyat.
And Usle Sei, Gulyat, Mathi, Visai, Praptega Re.
Kujomna, Haro, Jam, Gulyat.
And Solomon is a prayerful man.
And Solomon, Pani, Pratna Gharne Vektitiye.
Solomon, Ude, Ubad, Dhuwa.
Daniel is a prayerful man.
And Daniel, Pani, Pratna Gharne Vektitiye.
Daniel, Ude, Upre, Upaduwa.
God answered Daniel's prayer.
Permission.
He has given relief from the captivity to the children of Israel.
And permissionli, Daniel Ko, Pratna Ko, Utter, Diere, Banduwa, Israele Ko, Banduwa, Na, Waale, Chukkaran, Dinu Hae, Tio.
Ublay, Uska, Ki Dhuwa, Jutut, Daniel, Baru, Pla, Dakajin, Jate, Barau.
In New Testament, we can see, Lord Jesus Christ himself is the example, that he has given an example, that prayer is must in this world.
And Nayanyamma, Pravisu, Swayamle, Udharan, Diere, Yo, Bataunu Hoyo, Ki, Pratna Sei, Mitanta, Auschicha, Yo, Zavanama.
Hakane Ka Por, Utraj, Shri, Dalade, Rupedi, Hakane, New Testament, Bah, Mahu, Ro, Ju, Dhuwa.
In order to establish this new testament church, and before he chosen twelve disciples, he went unto the mountain, and he prayed.
And Nayanyamma, Yo, Mandali, Stapit, Karne, Vanda, Paila, Bara, Chelharlae, Channe, Vanda, Paila, Wa, Tio, Pahar Ma, Zane, Hae, Andi, Pratnamas, Sumai, Bataunu Hae.
Bah, Hamne, Ro, Chawan, Penyeng, Yekene, Ka Balan, Bah, Chawan, Penkrai, Yekito, Ik, Katar, Mu, Ki, Senraan, Ju, Dalade, Ruru, La, Ya, Kalung, Banduwa.
He taught same prayer to the disciples in Matthew's Gospel, chapter six.
And Muthi, Chodema, Waale, Chelharlae, Pratna Gharre, Si, Kaunu Hae.
Ha, Matheus, Jang, Manre, Vika, Yeki, Senraan, Man, Dhuwa.
Acts, chapter one, in the last verses, we can see, that the early believers are opposites, they are in prayer.
And Prerit, Ek, Odheima, Hami, Antim, Bhaakti, Ra, Dechnu Saksun, Ki, Ti, Teeti, Belaka, Vishwashiru, Chelharu, Pratna Gharne Vektirte.
Hakakam Apostol, Lenam, Way, Heki, Ki, Dkhati, Bakado, Nilapni, Bakijang, Senraan, Ki De, Ki, Bre, Bakju, Dhuwa.
In Acts of a puzzle, in every chapter, we can see, a prayer and prayer answering.
And Prerit Ko, Pratek, Odheima, Hami, Dechnu, Pratna Gharre Ko, Andi, Pratme, Utter, Pae, Eko.
Hakikam Apostol, Nilapni, Ki Ne, Bah, Kaye, Eka Kam, Kabajia, Eka Dhuwa, Bar Yo, Pe, Ju, Ba, Bro.
The Lord chosen Paul as a great instrument for the sake of the Gentiles.
And Any Jati, Erko, Nimti, Paul Lae, Permesurli, Evta, Lagne, Hatiyar, Banai, Kana, Pray, Gunnu Hoyo.
Or, Yo, Paul, Ro, Ublay, Ula, Uptre Kam, Balong, Hatiyar, Ban, Navanta Ki, Navanta, Man, Pla, Ke, Yeki, Ne, Ki, Gentile.
Before that, we can see, Acts, chapter three, Peter and John going to the, to the house of God, to the temple for prayer.
And Ki, Vanda, Agadi, Yo, Narap, Patruslae, Permesur Ko, Mandil Ma, Pratna Ko, Sumai Ma, Geyre, Hami, Dechnu Saksun.
Hakabala, Yo, Nilapni, Bah, Yo, Isbat, Upetrasu, Le, Chaka, Temple, Banduwa.
Acts, chapter nine, verse eleven, it is written about apostle Paul.
And Nowko, Iharap, Prerit Ma, Hami, Pauso, Pa, Watar, Paul Ko, Vishima.
Ha, Hakad, Apostol, Jinda, Nilapni, Sabangu, Sabangu, Paul.
The seventh verse, we'll read altogether.
Hami, Iharap, Padla, Sabijana, Milere, Pani Sos.
Barway, Dkhati, Pulalang, Baro.
And the Lord said.
And Pravri.
Rise and go in the street.
Sinha, Vani, Chadak, Mzam.
And inquire in the house.
And, Saal, Na, Bayko, Das, Srechana, Manis, Ube, Shiva, Saksun.
Behold, he, Rah, 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 Upratna Gharre, Ki So. The Lord knows that Paul is a prayerful person.
Esre, Bataun, Saksun, Hami, Janu Sos, Ki, Paul Sei, Pratna Gharne Vektitiye.
Bichu, Ublay, Utep, Bah, Upar, Upre, Upre, Bakju, Dhuwa.
That's why we can see, Paul has been mightily used by the Lord in the New Testament church.
Desi, Kanle, Hami, Dechnu Saksun, Ki, Permesurli, Samotko, Saatma, Er, Nayam, Ko, Mandil Ma, Paul Lae, Pray, Gunnu Hae.
Nilapni, Hakad, Te, Te, Smema, To, Mai, Bah, Ublay, La, Uptre Kam, Hae, Upar.
Prayer is service to God.
Pratna Sei, Permesurli, Permesur Ko, Seokai Ho.
Bakij Dhuwa, Karre, Ki, Shakri, Utrae.
As much we are praying, and that much God will reply us.
Hami, Jati, Pratna Gharseu, Teeti, Ne, Permesurli, Hamna, Utter, Dinuncha.
Karbha, Kita, Ki Dhuwa, E, Katta, Utrae, Na, Ju, Ba, Digi.
So, these prayerful people are, and having vision in their, in their service.
And Yeska, Pratna Gharne Vektiru, Le Sei, Unar Ko Sei, Darshanuncha, Unar Ko, Jiun, Kar Laagi, Bayshu, Kar Laagi.
Ki Ta Ki Bre, Bakju, Dhuwa, Ki Yo, Eka Vision, Ha, Bo, Jang, Ka Balan.
See, prayerful people, when they are kneeling down, and just they are kneeling down, in, just opposite to the face of God.
And Jabo Sei, Yeska, Pratna Gharne Vektiru, Guanatixen, Unarle, Permesur Ko, Tik, Agadi Sei, Guanatikke, Re, Kauncha.
Ki, Parabangit, Ki Bakju, Dhuwa, Jang, Vaseo, Ki, Ye, Ki, Five, Parsha, Cha, Utrae.
If your God's servant is there just before you for prayer, and you will pray.
And Tabai, Permesur Ko, Seok, Hununcha, Andi, Tabai Le, Permesur Sei, Ko, Pratna Gharuncha.
Aba, Pila, Ki Shakri, Jang, Bre, Bar Hamta, Fi, Fi, Dhuwa, Pako, Utrae.
Almost will pray, Long prayer, will pray.
And Hami, Sei, Dhere, Sumai, Pratna Gharseu.
Bakadog, Por, Ki Dhuwa, Is, Jramha.
Because God's servant is listening.
Ki, Haney, Deki, Permesur Ko, Seok, Le, Chusuni, Re, Ki So.
But a person.
Rah, Haru, Shakri, Jang, Utrae, Ki, Shakri, Jang, Utrae, Ki, Nasramha.
But a person, kneeling down and seeking in God's face, he is a prayerful man, and he is just opposite to the face of Lord Jesus Christ.
And Jun, Vektii, Le Sei, Permesurli, Permesur Ko, Muhar, Khosi, Re, Re, Permesur Ko, Agadi, Re, Re, Pratna Gharre, Ki, So, Permesur, Icha, Buzna, Lae.
And Bre, To, Upre, Ba, Uba, Dhuwa, Yo, Utrae, Ude, Upre, Uba, Prayerful, Ude, Pre, Prayerful Man.
Such people, they will have vision of the Lord in their life.
And Yeska, Vektial Sei, Permesur Ko, Tio, Darshanlae, Unar Ko, Jiun Ma, Ta, Paunu Saksun.
Kum Ki Ta Ki Bre, Kilap, And Yo, Eka Vision, Ke, Jang, Utrae.
In our fellowship, brother boxing, we know, man of God is a man of prayer.
And Hamro, Sangati, Haruma, Hami Le, Dechnu Saksun, Ba, Boxing, Singlae, Wa, Pani, Permesur Ko, Seok, Pratna Ko, Manchun, Unu, Tio.
Ya, Bakijing, Slab, Jangi, Hitip, Bra, Bra, Bu, Brother Boxing, Ude, Upre, Jang, Eka, Dhuwa.
Then he will sleep, people do not know.
Uh, Wa, Kaili, Suknu, Tio, Manis, Ra, Khati, Ena.
Meno, Mai, Yo, Chia, Unan, Bati, Bre.
Always, you will be upon his knees.
Wa, Zai, Le, Pani, Aknu, Ghurama, Unu, Tio.
Manla, Por, Hidu, Dan, Ha, Eka, Vaseo.
Seeking the face of God.
Permesur Ko, Muhar, Lae, Khosi, Re, Ne.
Shetpe, Ta, Eka, Kamat, Jang, Utrae.
Having the vision of God.
And Permesur Ko, Tio, Darshanlae, Praptega, Ri, Ra, Na.
Yo, I, Ba, Manla, Por, Eka Vision, Jang, Utrae.
The Lord will share his heart's burden to such people.
And Apnu, Hidai Ko, Bozlae, Permesurli, Sei, Yeska, Vektir, Pidi, Prapat, Karuncha.
Ublay, Upan, Pa, Eka, Badan, Ke, Jango, Uh, Yaha, Halat, Kum Ki Ta Ki, Jat, Bre.
Such people, their work according to the will of God.
And Yeska, Vektial Sei, Permesur Ko, Icha, Anusaar, Kam Karren.
Kum Ki Ta Ki Bre, Ki, Ya, Kum, Kam, Mun, Ke, Jang, Utrae.
There are many people, they are serving.
And Yeska, Dhere, Manchurson, Justle, Seokai, Karre, Ki Kason.
Kusipun, Ba, Ki Bre, Ki, Ba, Le, Kum, Kene, Ki, Shakri.
Some people, example, they are in the Bible also.
And Bible, Wa, Pani, Yeska, Vektir, Udharan, Nai, Pauso.
Kum Ki Ne, Ki, Bun, Ki, Bre, Nilapni, O, Chappal, Ha, Bible.
They came to the heaven's door.
And Uni, Unsei, Swarga Ko, Dhokasama, Aipuke.
Ki, Ma, Ki, Ki, Wan, Hakajin, Kam, Jangka, Bane.
They are telling, Lord, in your name, we casted out the demons.
And Unarle, Hone, Ki, Pravoh, Tabai Ka, Nam Ma, Hamile, Uh, Disa, Atmarla, Hamile, Thapayo.
Ki, On, Atra, Eka, Kriting, Jom, Meng, Nilapni, Eka, Sui.
Lord, in your name, we perform miracles.
And Tabai Ko, Nam Ma, Hamile, Achij, Ke, Kam, Ru, Kareu.
Tra, Eka, Kriting, Jom, Meng, Nilapni, Eka, Kamba.
You know what the Lord told them?
Permesurli, Waala, Ke, Vannu, Wa, Thasa.
Utrae, Wong, Ayu, Yeki, Pidet.
What the Lord told them?
Probably, Ke, Vannu, Wa.
Utrae, Wong, Ayu, Yeki.
I do not know you, yesterday.
Wa, Timiar, Ra, Mo, Chindina.
Bar, Ami, To, Re, Fi, Utrae, Wong.
According to. Whose will you did that?
Kosko, Icha, Anusaar, Se, Timli, Re, Gareu.
Dakar, Mun, Jang, No, Fi, Le, Kabhi, Eka Ne.
It's not according to my will.
Tio Sei, Meru, Icha, Anusaar, Te, Ena.
Kamde, Nakajing, Nakajing, Kabun, Jangha.
Prayerful people.
Pratna.
They will know the plans of God, and they will work for the Lord in the will of God.
And Pratna Gharne Vektial Sei, Permesur Ko, Yo, Snalai, Jan Darshan, Andi, Permesur Ko, Icha, Anusaar, Se, Unarle, Kam Karren.
Ki, Ki, Bre, Jang, Pray, Ki, Le, Ki, Tipe, Eka Kam, Ke, Jang, Pray, Bah, Ki, Ya, Kum, Ha, Ketai.
In Isaiah, chapter six, we know, Isaiah.
Yesi, Ya.
He saw the vision of God.
Yesi, Ya, Chodheima, Hami, Janu Sos, Usle, Permesur Ko, Darshan, Pae.
Hakaisi, Hamre, Yi, Bolai, Yi, Eka, Eka, Vision, Jang, Pray.
And he saw the Lord, and I, he is seated on the high end, lifted up the throat.
And Waale, Deke, Ki, Permesur Sei, Mathi, Aglu Ma, Biras Man, Hununcha, Chiasun Ma.
Mahulai, Yi, Bah, Utrae, Ka, Sky, Ka, Kajin, Chom, Ju, Ah, Kajin, Chom, Sti, Jang, Mu, Madam, Hajramha.
He is a great son of the Lord, God is holy, holy, holy.
And Waale, Thulo, Awasune, Permesur, Poitra, 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 Hununcha.
Ha, Yasur, Eka Sur, Kabah, Jamha, Bang, Kabakui, Kabakui, Kabakui.
When he saw the vision of God in his life.
Jabo, Usle, Aknu, Jiun Ma, Permesur Ko, Darshanlae, Deke.
Hakajin, Kim, Ju, Abalai, Yi, Eka Ne, Ki, Vision.
He began to cry, Lord, I am undone, I am defined, person, defined, defined, I am, I am having defined lips.
And Usle, Yesri, Karair, Hunnu, Thasa, Pravoh, Monas, Bay, Ki, Ne, Ni, Mo, Sudha, On, Bay, Ke, Vektio.
Ula, On, Hamta, La, Prata, Hamta, Wong, Atra, Eka, Upre, Uba, Ubam, Uba, Kabui, Ke, Chle, Ba, Ha, Ula, On, Hamta.
So the Lord cleansed him.
And Permesurli, Slasudha, Ganwa.
Bah, Utrae, La, Upan, Kabui, Ju.
Then the Lord asked a question.
And.
Utsal, I said, who will go for me?
And Permesurli, Evta, Prasna, Ganu, Hau, Mo, Koslae, Patao, Meru, Nimti, Ko, Jansha.
Bah, Utrae, La, Kili, Uh, Ula, Ujinkli, Yo, Mano, Kanle, Kabantre, Jangha.
And he told, here are my Lord, and you can use me.
And Usle, Hone, Mahui, Yaha, Su, Permesur, Malai, Pray, Karnu, Saksuncha.
Bar Wong, Ta, Eka, Ran, Hamne, Pilap, Pak, Uptre Kam, Yanga.
Prophet, I say, he is a man of vision.
And Yesi, Ya, Permesur Ko, Vektii Sei, Uh, Darshan, Ha, Le, Bhare, Kam, Manchitiye.
Uprophet, Asiaro, Ude, Upre, Uba, Don, Daka, Vision.
In New Testament, we can see about Paul.
And Nayanyamma Sei, Hami, Paul Ko, Vishima, Dechnu Saksun.
Barakabar, Niyam, Kabat, To, Mai, Yo, Upar, Nilapni.
Acts, chapter twenty-six.
Yeah, Prerit Ko, Kam, Chapi, Sudhai.
Kam Apostol, Abun, Re.
Let us read verse nineteen altogether.
Hami, Subai, Jana, Milere, Unna, Is, Padla, Pani Sos.
Hakad, Jinda, Yea, Pulalang, Yeka Ne.
Acts twenty-six, nineteen altogether.
Chapi, Skal, Preri, Unna, Is, Hami, Subai, Jana, Milere.
Abun, Re, Hakad, Jinda, Yea, Pulalang, Yeka Ne, Baro.
Whereupon, oh, here I was Yes, the vision of the heavenly vision. Here it is a mentioning of the heavenly vision.
याँचै उसले स्वर्गीय दर्शन बताइ रहेकोस
हम्मे उलाय यथु शबांका जिंपर्पाउ बनें
He is a prayerful man, he know the vision of God.
अनि उनी चाहिए प्राक्ना गर्ने व्यक्ति छिए तसिले कता परमेश्वर को दर्शनलाई उसले जाने कति
मु उब उलों उब दुआएर कता उरिया कजिंपर्पाउ जुम्बले
What is this vision?
यो दर्शन चक्कु
कने कजिंपर्पाउ कने के
But nowadays, what is the vision?
ज्ञानको लागि यो दर्शन चक्कु
नकजिं पर्स्तार जिंगी कने कजिंपर्पाउ कने के
The Lord Jesus restoried in the Gospel, structured the scriptures and it will testify of me.
प्रभु शिक्रिष्ट ले भन्नु भयो सुसमचार मा की तिमले पौहित्र सास्त्र को खोजिगर यानीर अन्य विषयमा लिखिका कुरारु तिमले थापाउने सो
उत्राय उओं वाक्य का गोस्पेल बाका ठोस शबांका जुन्गा
Where we can see the vision of God.
हामीले परमेश्वर को दर्शनलाई कहाँ पाउन सक्छौ देख्न सक्छौ
हाम्नो अन्य निलावनी यो एक जिंपर्पाउ जुन्ग्राय
We can see the vision of God through the word of God, the Bible.
हामीले परमेश्वर को दर्शनलाई चाहिए परमेश्वर को पौहित्र सास्त्र, परमेश्वर को वचन द्वारा हामी देख्न सक्छौ
यो जिंपर्पाउ जुम्बले निलावनी दका 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 जिंपर्पाउ जुम्बले निलावनी दका जिंगी जुम्बले
Olden days, God spoke with the true prophets.
पुराना विज़न्स, पुराना दिनरुमा चाहिए परमेश्वर ले दर्शनरु द्वारा अनिवश वतार द्वारा बोल्नुहो
अकासिगी कबाका कबारी निहि बाका जिंपर्पाउ जुम्बले कलाकरण नाकी प्रापेत
But in Hebrews, chapter one was first two verses if we can read, we can understand, how can I get this vision?
तर हिब्रू एको दयाईको पैलो तिपत माइ पाउन सक्छौ किकसरी हामी यो दर्शनरु देख्न सक्छौ
अकाहिब्रू लनों उब उब निलावनी कुम्नो शबांका ने कजिंपर्पाउ
Let us read these two verses altogether.
हामी सबै जाना मिलेर यति पत्ना पढ्ने सो
God परमेश्वर यता प्राचीन पाई मा अमृत भित्ता पर्सुना बेविन समय मा बेविन प्रकारे भयश्यपुत्तार्क है तिस लोस अन्य धर्म चाहिए हामी सुना अपना पुत्र द्वारा हेरोफाल्दी व्हो वाल्स जस्तारहुन्न वाले संसार बनाउन Nowadays, the Lord is speaking through his son.
इदिनरुमा चाहिए परमेश्वर आपनु पुत्र को द्वारा हामी सबै बलिरणुहै तस
अकेसी बमिता उपले दकरण भरु को डकुन जुन्गो
According to the word of God, just Gospel, chapter one, verse one, is telling that in the beginning, there was word, and word with God, that word is God.
अनि यवना एको एकमा लिखि अनुसार परमेश्वर को वचन अनुसार शुरुमा वचन चियो अनि वचन परमेश्वर सोना चियो अनि वचन ने परमेश्वर चियो
भराकबार जांग निलावनी बाक उपले बाका जिंगी जुम्बले जन्मरु ब्ले बाका जिंगी जुम्बले ब्ले बात उताऊ कुनी जुम्बले लोंग ब्ले
That word became flesh.
अनि चियो वचन चाहिए शरीर मा आई
बाका तोका तोका जिंग कलोंग नोकदो
He is the Lord Jesus Christ.
अनि उनी चाहिए प्रभु शिक्रिष्टून
मौलाई उत्राय यसु क्रिस
If you turn the page of the scriptures, you can know about Christ and you can see a vision of God, Jesus Christ.
अनि पौहित्र सास्त्र को पन्नाहरु तपाइले पठाउनुहै वने देखि तपाइले प्रभु शिक्रिष्ट देख्न हुन्छ अनि प्रभु शिक्रिष्ट को विषयमा दर्शनरु तपाइले थापाउन हुन्छ
अब विप्रे यकने किकै नै किस्ला फिलावनी बाका यकने का किताब उत्राय यसु क्रिसु देखुन जुम्बले
First Corinthians, chapter eleven, verse one, Paul is telling here.
पैलो करुति एघारक एकमा पावल बनिरहेकसन
करुति पकर्वाइ कोल्ड अंगुने
First Corinthians, chapter eleven, verse one.
पैलो करुति एघारक एक करुति बनोकों कबाले नम्मर्वे दकर्वे
Be followers of me even as I also I am of Christ.
जसरी मु क्रिष्टो देखासिकी गर्दसु उसरी नितिमय रुपणी मेरो देखासिकी गणि हो
तोलों भीरु किन्नो प्रकृत बात जुन्गा कुम्बांगारु नलों जुम्ब्रिस
He is looking Christ.
उसले क्रिष्ट लाहेरहेकोस
उरान यी यो क्रिस
If you see the service life of apostle Paul, and he imitated Christ in everything.
अनि हामीले पावल को शिवकाय को समयलाहेरै बने देखि उसले से प्रत्येक कुरामा प्रभु शिक्रिष्ट को अनुकरण गरिरहेको सन
अलरंग पे यकनिम यो पोल उले मन्नला कद्दै काम बजो वन बिन्या दे बरु क्रिस
He denied himself.
उसले आफालाई इनकार करे
उलाय यादे उला
And taken up his cross and followed the Lord Jesus Christ.
अनि आपको क्रूस उठायर अप्रभु शिक्रिष्ट लापछाय
उलाबाहे लिख्राजुन्गा बुढ्यो क्रिस
That's what the Lord told in the Gospel.
चियो चाहिए प्रभु शिक्रिष्ट ले चाहिए सुसमचार मा बताउनुहो
नकत्राक उकन्या का गोस्पेल उयतु यकने
Matthew's Gospel, chapter sixteen, verse eighteen, the Lord is telling, I will build my church, the gates of heaven shall not prevail against it.
मति सोलो अठारमा प्रभुले भन्नु उद्देश्य की मु मेरो मंडली बनाउनुहुन्छ अनि अदलको फाट्यकरु के प्रवाह हुनेछैन
मथियोस कन्नरे को अंगुने बाङास्नाह यका बलांग जुन्गा बाका कजिंखां जुन्गा दुज्यक कन्नुर्ला अनुरुग्न पोजन्गा
Before he uttered this statement, and he has chosen twelve disciples.
अनि यो शब्दर उचारण गर्नुहुन्नु पहले वाले बारातनाच्छलार छानुहै कति
जवान क्रिया कने कजिंगुराजी तुपाकर अर्मु किस्त्रान जुन्गो
The Lord is the builder of the church.
प्रभु चाहिए यो मंडली बनाउनुहुन्छ
उत्राय उदे वथाउ यका बलां
But he is taking the help of twelve disciples.
तर वाले चाहिए बारातनाच्छलार को सायता लिरणुहै कस
याने लशिम जिंगियार नकी खार अर्मु किस्त्रान
These people are helpers, not builders.
अनि यो व्यक्ति अरु चाहिए सायता कुराउनेरु निर्माण गर्नेरु हैन
हिले पत्की उब्रयु किदै किबिन्यार उदे किन्नो छना
Why? Because this building work, the Lord Jesus Christ alone is handling.
किनाले देखि यो जुन्छ बनाउने काम चाहिए निर्माण गर्ने काम चाहिए यो चाहिए प्रभु शिक्रिष्ट आफाई ले निर्माण गरिरनुहै कस
कने का बिल्डिंग लने वश्नाह यकने कने दे वश्ना हिर उत्राय दलादे
This church will not be built by the human hand.
यो मंडली चाहिए मान्ची को हात द्वारा बनिने हैन
कने कबलां अंगुने वश्ना नकती कजुम्बले
Nobody can build a church in this world.
कसैले पनि यो मंडलीलाई बनाउन सक्नुहो नहि सक्या सक्या
हम्म्या प्रत्येक मनोमनो रुम्लार वश्नाह यकने
People are going, I'll build this church, I'll build this church, I'll build that church.
कति मान्ची अले सरी घमण्ड कर्छन की मैले यो मंडली निर्माण करे मैले यो मंडली निर्माण करे यो मंडली निर्माण करे भनिकन
बुन्दा किब्रिबिजों बगने कबलांगा थाउ
We have to ask to such such person, who has given authority to build?
हामीले इसको व्यक्ति अरुलाई सोत्न पर्छ तपाइले कोसले अनुमति दियो यो बनाउनकनिंती निर्माण गर्नकनिंती
हिले पन्कली यकी मनोबाय बोर यी वश्नाह यकने
The Lord called us to go work with him.
परमेश्वर ले हामीलाई संगी काम सहकर्मी हुनकनिंती बनाउनुहै को
मौलाई कोटिंगी बांगिलों किताब किन्नो यस्नो किलाम
In the building, which the Lord is building, for that, our labor, our services needed.
जुन् भवन परमेश्वर ले निर्माण गरिरणुहै कस त्यसमा खेतालार का आवश्यकता परेको कान्य कता परे परमेश्वर ले हाम्रो सायता लिन हुन्छ
वश्नाह कता का बिल्डिंग उत्राय उडन काम यकिताब किन्नो यार को
Who are faithfully, who are faithfully serving and putting forth the labor, the Lord is going to reward them.
जसले विश्वास शिक्य सातमा परमेश्वर को काममा परमेश्वर को निर्माणमा खेताला अहर काम गरिरहेकसन
उपले उनाह किजिकरको यकिता किपाय यार अहने का काम बन्य त्रेलाम
Matthew's Gospel, chapter sixteen, verse twenty four.
मति सोलो छब्बीस
मथियोस अपुन रेव अर्पसाउ
Sixteen twenty four.
अकन्नरेव अर्पसाउ
Let us read that verse.
हामी सबै जाना मिलेर पढ्ने
Kindly open your Bibles.
तपाइले त्राय गरितन आपनु बाइल नल लकोन्नो
Matthew's Gospel, chapter sixteen.
मति सोलो
Verse twenty four.
अनि छब्बीस पर
Let us read it altogether.
हामी सबै जाना मिलेर पढ्ने सो तब इश्यु यापर चलाउन यी मेरे माता चाल्लू बने कुश्लाक
Then he denied himself and took his cross and followed me. The same thing apostle Paul followed.
अनि यही कुरास चाहिए प्रेड पावल ले पछाय
यकने कजिंगी उप अपोस्टल पाल उला बुढ
The day he has the call of God for his ministry, he denied himself.
जुन्दिन वाले परमेश्वर भाटो शिवकाय कनिंती बुलात पाउनुहो तेहि दिन वाले आफालाई इनकार करे
अकासिगी बलाक्षक्वात क्योंने अपोस्टल पाल डाहादासिगी उला उला किन्ताजन यलादे
What is the testimony of Paul?
पावल को गोवाई किस
कति सम्मिलिजो पाल करेकर
Acts chapter twenty, verse twenty four.
प्रेड बिसको छब्बीस
काम अपोस्टल अर्पो अर्पो का अर्पसाउ
Let us read altogether, please.
हामी सबै जाना मिलेर पढ्ने सो
उले लागे कने ब्रो
Acts chapter twenty and verse twenty four.
प्रेड बिसको छब्बीस पर
अर्पो कब अर्पसाउ काम अपोस्टल
All together, please kindly open this very important verse, very important verse.
यो एउटा मत्त पूर्ण पत्तो
अनि बावुसंग कजिंग
But the Lord is speaking to me, really, totally, definitely, not yet, so after prayer, I think, we are going to do With joy
रहो शिवा हनन्सर कुरा दर्श
Of the grace of God.
सुसमचार को गोवाई दिनक्रिंती प्रभु शिव भाटो पायेकसु
What is it telling?
मुलकी बनिरणुहै
उडामो यो ने
Nay will count time my life dear unto myself.
नो तामो आपनु प्राणलाई ने आपनलागि प्रिय ठान्दसु
नम्कैन्यो कोर्सु यालादक यादे
What is the meaning of this?
यसको मतलब के हो
कमुने यो कने
Denied himself.
उसले आफालाई इनकार करे
कमुन्यो कोर्सु यादे
Completely, the vision of God has captured him.
पूर्ण प्रकारले परमेश्वर को दर्शनले उला पकडेको चियो
कजिंपर्पाउ जुम्बले कलाकेम यो
A person who denies himself, and he will come under the control of the vision, vision of God.
जुन् व्यक्तिले आफालाई इनकार कर्छ अनि पूर्ण प्रकारले परमेश्वर को दर्शनको दिन्तामा उस
उताऊ उब्रयु अमृत विश्व यम्सु यादे उलावनो अपजिंपर्पाउ जुन्ग्राय
If you are holding on your life dear unto yourself.
अगर तपाइले आपनु प्राणलाई चाहिए प्रिय ठानीकन पकडीरणुहुन्छ
नर्फिन्ग कैन्गो यादे बाकि दम्बसाय कता
That means you are pounding yourself.
तपाइले आफालाई बंधनमा पारिरणुहुन्छ
मुर्फिन्ग शात्य ब्रो
You are not giving chance that vision should take over you.
उताबाइले चाहिए चियो दर्शनले तपाइलाई पूर्ण प्रकारले पकडेको तपाइ छान हुन्न
कत्तो जिंपर्पाउ तिम्पुआर यकान बाका यफी
When I am telling the life of apostle Paul.
मैले किना प्रेड पावल को जियन को विषयमा बताइ रहेकोस
बल्लाय नदा ओंग शबांका जिंग जुम्ब अपोस्टल पाल
Apostle Paul followed the Lord Jesus Christ.
किनाले प्रेड पावल ले चाहिए प्रभु शिक्रिष्ट लापछाय
अपोस्टल पाल उपुढ्यो त्राय यसु
We can understand, even Baxing also followed the life of apostle Paul.
अनि हामी भन्न सक्छौ की ब्रदर बक्सिंगले पनि पावल को जिवनलाई पछाय
निलापकाउन अंगुने बाइ ब्रदर बक्सिंग्रो निलाबुढ्यो कजिंग जुम्ब पाल
Sad to say, these days, the Lord is not finding like man of God, brother Baxing.
दुकासात भन्न पर्छ इदिनरुमा परमेश्वर ले आपनु दास ब्रदर बक्सिंग जस्तो कोइ पनि पाउनुहै कसैन
लावनो नकी चिसिसि अकेले किसी कबमिता निम्नाशुर रे बन्यो उपुम शक्री ब्रदर बक्सिंग
Everybody holding their life and serving the Lord in their own way.
सबै जाना ले नहि आपनु जिवनलाई चाहिए आपनु प्राणलाई चाहिए पकडीराखेर परमेश्वर प्रशिवा गरिरहेकसन
हम्मे कसी बमिता बुन्की पर्याजला कल्दे बाकी शक्री उत्राय
This ministry is going, this ministry is going outside the vision.
यो जुन्छ शिवकाय चाहिए चियो चाहिए दर्शन देखि बाहिर गए कस
कने कजिशक्री गन्नुले शबार जिवजिंपर्पाउ
We are in the church period.
हामी चाहिए मंडलीको समयमा छौ
यीमताइ नन्नर होको जुन्गा बलां
Revelation, chapter three, is telling about, and the final church, Laudovia, it is speaking about.
अनि प्रकाश तिन दयाईको अन्ततिर लाउडिश्या मंडलीको विषयमा बताइएकोस
अकेजिंपर्पाउ कबालाई केतु शबांका बलांग जुन्गा लाउडिश्या
There look, that is a lukwam church.
अनि यो चाहिए एउटा लुकवान मन्तातो मंडली हो
निलावनों बाका दे कबलांका वंदन जिसाइ बाकि देन जिक्रिया
They are not cold or they are not hot.
उनारु तातो पनि छैन उनारु चिस्सो पनि छैन
यम्दे किपासाइ यम्दे किपासाइ रो
They are lukwam church.
उनारु चाहिए मन्तातो
किदै किपास किपास अकिपम्साइ किपम्फियार रो
Visionless people.
उनारु संग दर्शन छैन
किपादुना कजिंपर्पाउ
Visionless activities are going on in church.
अनि दर्शन बिना काम अरु मंडलीमा भाई रहेकसन
किकाम किपम्दन कजिंपर्पाउ कबलां
What is the vision?
चियो दर्शन चक्कियो
केकाय कजिंपर्पाउ
Nothing but the word of God, the will of God.
कुनै पनि कुरा हैन तर परमेश्वर को वचन, परमेश्वर को इच्छा
कम्म्दे के के हेन्रेका कम्म्दे के के हेन्रेका विज़न जुम्बले
Everybody is serving the Lord out of their own will, and they wanted to satisfy their desire.
अनि प्रत्येक ले चाहिए आपनु इच्छा द्वारा परमेश्वर प्रशिवकाय गर्न छान्छ अनि आपले इच्छा राखुराखर्न छान्छ
भराकिन्हास्क्री उत्राय देखा मन्नला जुन्गा किपर्पाय का मन्नला जुन्गी
There is a richness of Christ is there in the church.
यानीर अन्य परमेश्वर को चियो धान चाहिए देखा पर्दैन
अन्ताम ईरे कस्पाक जुन्ग्राय
There is no word of God.
यानीर परमेश्वर को वचन छैन
नत्ते किंगी जुन्ग्राय
There is, there is no time for prayer, praying on the Lord.
याँ परमेश्वरलाई पर्किर अन्य परमेश्वरलाई प्राक्न करि समय छैन
कम्म्दन पोर ये यो त्राय बन्दय दुआए
You know, and in the olden days, Baxing used to give dates for the holy congregation in every place.
अनि पुराना दिनरुमा ब्रदर बक्सिंगले चाहिए पौहित्रमा सभाको निंती चाहिए वाले दिनरु तोकी दिन हुन्छ
अकापोर्चम ब्रदर बक्सिंग शन्बोय यकने कन्वक्षण उजुपोय कता कसी
Those days we used to get the Hebron messenger.
अनि तिदिन
I don't know how many of you got it.
इतिदिनरुमा चाहिए तिदिनरुमा चाहिए हेब्रॉन मैसेंजर बन्योडा पत्री का पाइन चियो
अकातो मस्की चाहिए यो का वेका वर्क कबाच्छे छ हेब्रॉन मैसेंजर
Some of the old people, they know the old believers.
साय पुराना विश्वास यले चियो देखेकसन
कलापन्लों की परापने किबरिन किलाई ये का
Hebron Sandes.
Hebron Sandes बनेर
अने कजिंग Hebron Sandes
In that, brother is to write very clearly.
अनि चियो एसमा चाहिए भाईले चाहिए सफासमा लिख्न हुन्छ
ये इताय ब्रदर इतौर र कजिशाय भा
I saw those words, that's why I'm reading.
अनि मैले चिचिशब्दर देखि कान्य कता फरि मैले भनिरहेकोस
नलाई ये कता कजिशो नकता कदाम ओंग
Those days we used to wait for next issue, when it will come.
अनि कोइले चाहिए अर्पो संस्करण आउछ बनेर हामी पर्किरण चियो
निराखाबन लनु लनु व्यकता का इश्युकन वन बियाम
In that Hebron Sandes, and there used to be a letter
चियो Hebron
For praise and prayer.
अनि चियो Hebron Sandes मा चाहिए एउटा पत्र हुन्छ की प्रसंसा
Praise and prayer, yeah.
प्रसंसा अनि प्राक्ना, प्राक्ना अनि प्रसंसा
अकातो का पेसेज जुका Hebron कशेटन कजिंग यारो बाका जिनुए
In that, he used to write after much prayer and waiting upon the Lord, the Lord revealed his perfect will, recording the holy congregation of El Shidaik Alimpong, these dates, and this is the theme God has given, in that way he used to write.
अनि यानीर वाले लिख्न हुन्छ परमेश्वर माती धरे पर्किपोची धरे प्राक्न पोची हामीले कालेपुमा हुने होलिकन्वक्षणको दिनरु अन्य तोके कसौ अनि चियो पौहित्रमा सभाको निंती आरार पोछे यो हुनेछ बनेर वाले लिख्न हुन्छ
You are trying to help? You are trying to help?
Very few people, they know the realities of Brother Baxing.
Because you are trying to help? Brother Baxing has written so many scriptures?
You are trying to help?
He used to go abroad and spend time three months there.
Because you are trying to help? Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Most of the time, he used to spend upon his knees in prayer in that place.
Because you are trying to help? Trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Lord, how we have to do this ministry? Show your will.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Oh, he is the man of vision.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
In Hebrews, this verse has been written, when I went to the Lord's service, and I have seen this verse, I was not disobedient to the heavenly vision.
Because you are trying to help? Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Those days, I asked old God servants, who has written this verse, who has given this verse?
Because you are trying to help? Because you are trying to help?
Who has given this verse?
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Then they told me, Baxing himself has given this verse right here in this place.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
I was not disobedient to the heavenly vision.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Though whatever comes, even at the cost of death, I don't want to disobey to the heavenly vision.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
These days, the Lord is seeking such servants for him.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Man of vision.
Because you are trying to help?
Where there is no vision, people will perish.
Because you are trying to help?
Where there is no word of God, honored, and everything will be wasted.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
One day, a great man of God asked Brother Baxing, now you are finding God's will.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Those days, everybody used to be afraid to speak to man of God.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
But this servant of God is little close to him, that's why he asked him.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
This is first-hand information I have taken, and who went and asked the man of God.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Very simply, he told.
Because you are trying to help?
You are finding very difficult to find God's will, how you are finding God's will, he asked.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help? You are trying to help?
He has given a very, very simple illustration.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
You know what he told?
Because you are trying to help?
See, in your house, five people are there.
Because you are trying to help?
Three rooms are there, and four rooms are there.
Because you are trying to help?
You are somewhere in other room.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
And from first room, somebody is coughing.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
There are five people.
Five?
This man is in this room.
Because you are trying to help?
Another person is coughing from that room.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Then somebody asks, who is coughing? Can you not tell?
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
It is very easy to identify.
Because you are trying to help?
It is my mother who is coughing.
Because you are trying to help?
It is my younger sister, she is coughing.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Another example he has given.
Because you are trying to help?
Somebody is coming into the house.
Because you are trying to help?
With chappal.
Because you are trying to help? Because you are trying to help?
By knowing that sound, we can say, somebody is coming, father is coming, or daddy is coming, mommy is coming, sister is coming.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Then he told very simply, it is very, that must easy for me to find out God's will.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
God will reveal his will those who waits for this will.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Man of God told a beautiful principle to find out God's will.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Kindly listen carefully, it is useful for you all.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
After God again.
You are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Everybody should have quite time.
Because you are trying to help?
And we have daily portion, we should have daily portion.
Because you are trying to help?
I hope you all understood now.
Because you are trying to help?
Have you taken daily portion in the morning?
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
What is the daily portion?
Because you are trying to help?
Morning one chapter from Old Testament, and evening one chapter from New Testament.
Because you are trying to help?
Mistake, naka chapter kabariin, si chapter, bat kajanmit, naka testament kabachumai, si chapter.
That is our daily portion.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Now you would able to understand, I think, no?
Because you are trying to help?
Now you tell, how many people taking a daily portion?
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Morning, I have not read the Bible.
Because you are trying to help?
Don't feel ashamed, raise your hand, you tell.
You are trying to help?
If you don't have this habit, from today, you decide, read one chapter from the Old Testament in the morning, and read one chapter in the night from New Testament in the morning.
Because you are trying to help? Because you are trying to help? Because you are trying to help? Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
That is called the daily portion.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Give one paper there.
Because you are trying to help?
Yesterday, I read twelve chapters, tomorrow I have to read thirteenth chapter.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Apart from this, any chapters you can read from the Bible.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
But your daily portion should be systematic.
Because you are trying to help? Because you are trying to help?
So, in that chapter, God will speak to you.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
God show me your will for this day.
Because you are trying to help?
What do you want me to do?
Because you are trying to help?
Lord, give me a promise from this daily portion.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Lord, give me exhortation, where I should be corrected from this daily portion.
Because you are trying to help? Because you are trying to help?
That's how your relationship started with the Lord.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
God will speak to you.
Because you are trying to help?
We should be men and women of vision.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Apostle Paul is a man of vision, I was not disobedient to the heavenly vision, he told.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Many people are misunderstanding this mission these days.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
I want to tell you one thing.
Because you are trying to help?
Pattern is different, vision is different.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
What is the pattern?
Because you are trying to help?
Morning, three songs and three messages in the, on Sunday, no pattern, we will follow. Worship table and final.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
This is very good.
Because you are trying to help?
This pattern is giving the justification in our spiritual life.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
We can cleave this pattern.
Because you are trying to help?
But we cannot cleave this vision.
Because you are trying to help?
It is opposite to that, that vision should take you completely, in control.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
This vision should lead him.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
I cannot lead vision of God.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
If I get this vision of God, the word of God, and I will come control of the word of God.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
That word of God will lead me. I will not lead, the word of God will take control of me, and it will lead me.
Because you are trying to help? Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
For that sacrifice needed.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
I should deny myself.
Because you are trying to help?
That's why Paul is telling, as counting whatever is benefit to me, I am counting as done.
Because you are trying to help?
You should go to the goal.
Because you are trying to help?
Run to the goal.
Because you are trying to help?
What the vision is telling?
Because you are trying to help?
Where the vision is taking me? See, after, and Isaiah got vision, and the Lord directed his paths.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help? You are trying to help?
Even Paul also is telling.
Because you are trying to help?
The Lord taken us there.
Because you are trying to help?
Spirit of God restrained us not to go there.
Because you are trying to help?
These verses we can find in Book of Acts.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
That means vision should take control of us and take us on to fulfill the purpose of God.
Because you are trying to help? Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Of the Lord's burden, we all have understood.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
Let us read Matthew's Gospel, chapter twenty-four, verse forty-six.
Because you are trying to help?
Matthias sixteen twenty-four.
Matthew's Gospel, chapter twenty-four and verse forty-six.
Matthias sixteen twenty-four.
Matthias sixteen twenty-four.
All together.
Because you are trying to help?
So doing.
Because you are trying to help?
Lord wants such a service these days.
Because you are trying to help?
Working according to his will.
Because you are trying to help?
But the Lord has given us the church.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
We were not supposed to do any part in work.
Because you are trying to help?
You are trying to help?
The Lord is the head of all church.
Because you are trying to help?
The Lord kept headship also.
Because you are trying to help?
We should bring all our talents under the headship of the church.